Okay, good evening. Thank you for joining us to the regular town council meeting for Monday, May 9. First of all, let me welcome the senior pastor of Sunnyvale First Baptist Church, Dr. Darren Weiss, to lead the invocation.
Let's pray together. Father, from everlasting to everlasting, you are God. We begin this meeting tonight acknowledging you as the God above all and the God before all. So I pray tonight for wisdom for this town council as they lead, as they deliberate, make decisions. Will you bless Mayor George and these council members with insight and favor? Father, help them as they deliberate to bring honor and glory to your name, to use the gifts that you have given to them. Will you use them to bless this town for the people who are here? We pray your blessings on the first responders and thank you for them, asking for your protection on their lives, on their work. And we pray through everything that you would be honored and glorified in everything that happens tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Weiss. Please join me standing for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, unto the republic, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible and just. Good evening, one more time. Let me welcome council staff and members of the audience to the regular town council for Monday, May 9. The time is 7:01. For the record, we have all council members except Mr. Erlich with the six or the seven council members present we have called. The first item on the agenda is present certificates of election to council member Ryan Finch, place one, and council member Kevin Clark, place two, following the May 7, 2022 general election date. Ms. Ramsey?
Mayor and council, I'll start with council member Finch. If you want to come down, I will give you your certificate of election and have you sign your statement of office, sir, and then we'll do the rest. Yes, sir.
Okay, for the record, item number two is statement of officer is completed by newly elected officials. And the three is the administration of oath to the respective council members.
I.
I.
State your name.
Brian Finch.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duty of office.
Duty of office.
Of town council member.
Of town council member.
Place one.
Place one.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will do the best of my ability.
And will do the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
Civil.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I.
I.
State your name.
Kathleen Clark.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duty of office.
Duty of office.
Of town council member, place two.
Of town council member.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will do the best of my ability. Preserve. Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So first up, Kevin Clark spent the front row of the picture like forty decades.
I know.
He's in the back, maybe he's been twenty-one.
No.
Sir, Mr. Ramsey?
Yes.
I was so trying. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I want to thank Mr. Finch and Mr. Clark for standing for the election again and getting elected. Appreciate your service, and your three more years of commitment to serve the town of Sunnyvale. Thank you, guys. Okay, moving on to the announcements and acknowledgement, pursuant to Texas Government Court, Section 551.R415, mayor and council and staff members may make announcements. With that, council, do you have any announcements? Okay, about staff. Going to close the item, public comments. This is the time, members of the audience may come forward and speak to the council on any item other than legal matters or personal items or items on the agenda. If you'd like to come forward and speak to the council, you may do so at this time. If you are joining us via Zoom, you may raise your hand. Now, when it's coming forward from the chamber, Eric, can anyone raise their hand?
Yes, sir.
No hands raised, we're going to close the public comments. Council, I have the honor of presenting two proclamations. Number one, item number four, presentation of proclamation by Mayor George declaring May 15 to 21, 2022 as National Police Week. And. And this is the proclamation of the office of the mayor, whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15 as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the calendar week in which this falls as National Police Week. And whereas a joint resolution of Congress was established, and National Police Week began to pay special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others, and to also recognize those that are currently serving our communities. And whereas, since the first known line of duty death in 1786, more than 22,000 United States law enforcement officers have made the ultimate sacrifice. And whereas in 2021, there were 458 law enforcement deaths, and 2022 saw 51,372 assaults against law enforcement officers, resulting in 15,980 injuries. And whereas the Sunnyvale Police Department, in partnership with the community, works to enhance the public safety, to reduce the fear and incident of crime, to serve the citizens of Sunnyvale with respect to, with respect and dignity, and to do so with honor and integrity. And whereas, the town of Sunnyvale community is proud to back the blue and are grateful for our outstanding law enforcement professionals working tirelessly every day. Now therefore, I, Saji George, may do hear my proclaim, May 15, 2021, 2022 as the National Police Week. Now therefore, be it for the result that May 15, 2022 is National Police Office and Memorial Day. This is an excellent time to reflect upon those law enforcement professionals who have given their lives in protection of communities across this nation. We thank our law enforcement for all they do to serve and protect our community and their families for the support they provide, our heroes in blue. In witness thereof, I have here to set my hands and cause the seal of the town to be affixed here to this, the ninth day of May 2022, town of Sunnyvale, signed by Mayor Saji George. I have one more proclamation, let me make that proclamation, I'll come down and. Item number 15, presentation of proclamation by Mayor Saji George declaring May 15 through 21, 2022 as National Emergency Medical Services Week. Proclamation office of the mayor, whereas emergency medical services provided a vital public service. And whereas the members of emergency medical services team are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival, a recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, the emergency medical services system consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas it's appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of the emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week and this year's theme, Rising to the Challenge. I encourage your community to observe this week by celebrating our local emergency medical services personnel. Now therefore, I, Saji George, may do hear my proclaim, May 15 through 21, 2022 as Emergency Medical Services Week. In witness thereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the town to be affixed here to this, the ninth day of May 2022. Also, would you join me, please? Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda, concern agenda items, council, we have one item. Item number six, consider actions on the minutes from the April 25, 2022 town council meeting. Would you like to remove the item from the concern agenda? Okay, if not, can I have a motion to approve concern item six as presented?
Motion to approve concern agenda item number six.
Second. Question made by Mr. Freeman, second by Clark to approve concern agenda item number six. All in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed, six, so Mr. Erlich is absent. Moving on to the discussion and action items, discuss considered action, electing a council member to serve as mayor for a term. Ms. Ramsey?
Mayor and council, as you all are aware, the charter states that a mayor pro temp shall be elected at the following regular meeting after an election and when the officers that were elected are sworn in. Again, the charter states that you shall elect a mayor pro temp today, so there's no putting that off. The mayor pro temp shall act as the mayor during the absence or disability of the mayor, and when doing so, she'll have all the ads converted as the mayor.
Council, I'm going to offer public, not comments, but your input earlier, Mr. Allen said about executing the mail or something like. As part of a motion he made, so just, just for timing, right?
Mayor, I'd like to nominate, I know this is a discussion, not necessarily a motion right now, I'd like to nominate Kevin Clark. He was recently nominated, elected, voted for, man, here at Sunnyvale, Texas. Great rapport with our school, our young people, our families, our community, our church, I think he'd be an outstanding candidate to fill that position. If you want motions, fine, if you just want a discussion, then I'll hold right there.
Yeah, I mean, if you don't mind, let me, let me, let me listen from everybody. I know in the past years, I made mistakes of not taking inputs that was my bad, so. Mr. Parker, do you have any opinion about it, or anything, any other recommendation you have? Okay, Mr. Finch? Mr. Freeman? Mr. Egan? Okay, I had another input, okay, if there are no other inputs, Mr. Allen, can I ask for a motion this time?
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Kevin Clark to be mayor pro temp for the upcoming.
Okay, mayor, motion made by Mr. Allen to elect.
I'll second this, Mayor.
Council member Clark to serve as the mayor pro temp, and motion second by Mr. Finch. Aaron heard the motion. The additional discussions. All in favor signify. All opposed? Motion passed 501, 51. Voting in favor, Mr. Clark, Mr. Finch, Mr. Allen, Mr. Freeman, and Mr. George. And voting against is Mr. Egan, and Mr. Erlich is absent. Moving on to action item eight, discuss considered action on change. Change order number one to the contract with the burn construction services for costs related to extending the sewer line along Trip Road and authorize the town manager to execute the change order in an amount not to exceed $547,309. Mr. Goff?
Good evening, Mayor and council. At the last council meeting, staff presented a change order to extend the sanitary sewer line to provide service to the 13 homes along Trip Road to the south of the Glazer property. The change order is an amount not to exceed $547,309 and would be paid for by federal grant funds received through the America Rescue Plan Act. At the last council meeting, council tabled the item and requested that staff survey the 13 homes to gauge their interest in the project, to see who wanted, who was likely to connect and who was not likely to connect. Door hangers were placed on each home, explaining the project, explaining the funding source of the project, and also explaining that there would be a private cost associated with connecting to the sewer line. The properties would be responsible for decommissioning their existing septic systems and then running a new service line out to the public main as well as a monthly service charge based on usage. So when that was explained to them, we had six of the 13 homes respond. Two said that they were not likely to connect, three said that they were likely to connect, and then one said that they would, would like to connect, but they were afraid that it was cost prohibitive for them to do so. And so with that information, we would, we'd just share that with you and ask for direction on how to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Goff, for following up on that action and receiving input from the residents. Let me open up our public comments, this is item number eight. If there's anyone from the members of the audience who'd like to speak to the council, on item number eight, you may come forward. If you are joining us via Zoom, you may raise your hand. Now, when it's coming forward from the chamber, Eric, can anyone raise their hand?
No, sir.
No hands raised, we're going to close the public comments. Council staff did what they were asked to do, and thank you in open for your comments. Mr. Freeman?
Charles, what was that cost again?
Sure, so the estimated cost, just based on calling around to a few plumbers and making some assumptions about length of lines and things like that, were in the neighborhood of about $35,000 to run the initial connection. And then the average single-family monthly sewer charge is about $95 a month.
Okay, so it's going to cost 35,000 for them to do it. So we had one person say it was cost prohibitive. And two said they were not likely to do it. Or, I mean, so what happens when their septic goes bad? Like, what happens to them at that point? I mean, can they just put in a new septic line if they say, hey, I don't want to do this anymore? So just put in a new septic tank and just be done with it?
So if, if the line is not extended, then yes, when their current septic system goes bad, has to be replaced, they would just apply with us and with Dallas County to decommission that septic system and replace it with a, with a new system. If the line were to be extended, then what the town's development regulations require, it says that the city shall not issue any new permits for septic systems. So they can continue utilizing their current septic system for as long as it exists. But at that point in time, when it needs to be replaced, they would be required to connect to the public main at that time, if it was extended.
At a cost of 35,000.
Correct. Or whatever it is at what.
So even if, like, so those two homes and the cost prohibitive home, that said, no, I don't want it. If their septic goes out in the next five, five years, they would be required to spend $35,000 to hook up to the sewer.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Finch, just to follow up, those are the ones that responded. There are 13 homes that could possibly be impacted by this, and we only had six respond. And so more than half didn't respond. And if we run the line, those half that didn't even respond, if something happened to their, to their septic system, then they would be required to pay their price. And I know I spoke to a family that would, would have been, in fact, they were not, I don't know if they felt, I don't know, they were not in favor of this option. And so I think there's a couple of constraints here. And number one, we don't have many, less than, not even half, a quarter said they will do it. And then we have additional costs. And then once we do it, if we decide to go ahead and do it, then we've now constrained everybody else who has made, who have made a decision, you know, to have septic. And so I just don't see that. I might have our kind of support.
Thank you, Mr. Finch. Anyone else? You see again?
I just want to, I know this is supposed to be more of a Q and A point for staff, but I'm going through this now. And estimates that I'm getting, and I haven't got any firm estimates yet, but estimates that I'm getting to replace our existing septic system, not because it's got a problem, but because we're looking at doing an addition onto our house. And because of the addition, I have to upgrade Dallas County in the state of Texas, says I need to upgrade. I'm getting prices in the area of eight to 10,000 dollars. And that's a one-time cost that doesn't have a hidden recurring cost other than pumping out of the system. As I heard number Finch saying earlier, it costs you about four, $500 to have this pump every couple of years or so. I get mind pumped about it, well, I've got a larger-than-normal system every four to five years for four to $500, not that big a deal. Also, just as, from a technical perspective, and knowing the longevity of those houses, even the ones that are having issues now, you know, septic system's good for 40 years. I'm on 42. Now, I'm sorry. Forty, four zero years. I'm on 42. Like I said, we're not having a problem, and we have a lot of big parties at our house and have had over the years. But this is, to me, a prohibitive cost to those homeowners, if they don't pay it, the subsequent homeowner would have to pay it. And those systems are old enough that they're probably going to need to be replaced because of their location and because of probably not being maintained as accurately as they probably should have been maintained. They've probably been maintained, again. I do mine every four to five years, they say better to do every two to three years. I think it's dependent on a bunch of other factors. But upgrading our existing, what they call conventional system, to an aerobic system is about eight to 10,000 dollars. And my house is larger, not by a whole lot, but a little larger than what those houses are, the 13 houses that are being discussed. So at the end of the day, doesn't make a lot of sense. This, this does not, doesn't make sense, as, as we discussed at last meeting, doesn't make sense for the town to spend that amount of money for 13 residents. Even if all 13 connected, it doesn't make sense. And then to burden that property, not the owner, depends on who owns it at the time, but to burden that property with $35,000. And my fear is, is that one of those houses might get sold and somebody may not disclose. And now the buyer's stuck with it. So this, this doesn't sound like, this is, to me, financially, a, a yes. This is probably more along the lines of, I think it's going to be easier for the ones hard-pressed to come up with the money. It's going to be easier for them to come up with eight to 10,000 dollars than it will for them to come up with 35 plus the town put a whole bunch of money into. It's far more than 35,000 per 13 houses, if I've got my mental math right.
So 35,000. Assuming that any, any of the, each of the, yeah, each of the houses will cost 35,000. So, so, Mr. Allen?
Right, and mayor and staff. Question I have for this is, is it a benefit for the greater good of the town, the community, to have that sewer line? Or is it innocuous to, to our public works in the town?
I would say it's, it's neutral. There are some cities that have philosophies that you should get as, as many people on your public system as possible just to have more support for that system, have more taxpayers paying into that system based on usage. But I, you know, I don't think 13 homes is going to, you know, make or break the system one way or the other.
Thanks, Charles. I would, I would say that if all 13 of them said absolutely they want it, then I think that I personally would support that. If it's not the case here, but if all 13 said, yeah, I would support that, thank you.
So I have a question for you.
So, Charles, right now, how many houses are actually on our sewer line? And how many actually have septic? Do we have any rough numbers?
I don't. I could do some research and get back to you, but I don't have that information.
Right, okay. And so right now, we don't really have a philosophy of, like, we want everybody to get on sewer at some point. There's never been a philosophy like that, which right now, it's whatever makes most financial sense for the, the homeowners.
I think our philosophy is, is for new development, particularly new subdivisions, for whenever feasible to, to get all new development on to the sewer system. It's a little bit different of a conversation for tying existing homes onto the system. So, you know, new subdivisions that go in, we would, more than likely, unless there's some unique feature about the property that would make it unfeasible for some reason, the utility conflict, or there's a grading issue or something like that, that would prohibit them, since these are all gravity systems. Otherwise, we'd want them to connect, but, but for existing homes, I don't think we've ever had that philosophical conversation.
Right, okay. And so six of the 13 homes responded, but the seven we didn't hear, hear from at all? Was it just a mailer or somebody walked by and talked to them or what?
We put, we put a door hanger on the front door.
Right, okay. Because I personally talked to the. Because I personally talked to the three, probably the three that said yes, that they're interested in doing it, you know. So, I have that view, but it's, I don't have the view of the others. I know councilmember Finch has spoken to somebody that did not, was not interested. But, you know, look at the numbers, it is cost prohibitive, $35,000 versus, you know, $7,000 to $10,000 to replace a septic system. So, is there any maintenance, any monthly maintenance costs for a septic system, whether it is for sewer?
There's not.
Just the cleaning or?
An aerobic system, there's two different kinds. And as somebody that's going through this firsthand, although I don't have the complete system documentation in front of me, and town engineer could probably speak more to this, but you got to kind of go through the weeds of where the state is, where the county is with regard to septic systems. First of all, and again, like I said a minute ago, they will not allow the state or the county, neither one. And I have spent several hours talking to the administrator for the county, who, when I applied for a permit, it goes through him. The state of the county says, number one, you have to have a minimum of one acre. If you have three-quarter acre, which there were a lot of houses at one time that were on three-quarter acre, including the neighborhood that's back up behind me, that's called, sometimes called the Green Edition, another times called, it's called the Dowworth Edition. It did not have, it was all septic at one time. And because of, and I mentioned this in the last meeting, sometime back in the early to mid 80s, the council member who lived in that neighborhood was somewhat tired of all the sewer systems backing up, as well were a lot of the neighbors. And it was determined that a sewer system would be put in through that area. My house was the only one that was not impacted because of its location relative to a stop sign behind the house. And it's darn near impossible, from a topography perspective, to connect onto us without some significant expense, probably close to the $35,000, just to get the lineup to where I can connect to it. So, we were kind of dropped out of that plan. Nonetheless, you know, those homes all have at least one acre, if not more. Aerobic systems don't depend on the percolation capability as what the conventional systems do. Percolation being the rate at which water gets absorbed into the ground. Those, these are the systems that end up, and we sometimes smell them because people don't sanitize the systems like they should when they're corona type systems. And while I bumped in, I'm saying something totally wrong. But the, they do require, most of these systems, when they're installed, they come in with a two-year warranty. That includes inspections. There is a water pump that's involved because they use the water pump to clean the somewhat clean water that is suitable for, by the state of Texas, to be able to spray that water on the ground as a result of coronation. And the aerobic enzymes and creatures and things like that that lack to live in septic tanks purify the water. Much like you see, as many of us fly, you fly over a large waste treatment plant. You see the great big huge round circles. Those of us who went out to North Texas Water District, we saw a summer thing that they do for lake water to precipitate out all the solids or let the solids fall. They do the same thing in sewer treatment plants, although they're beginning to get away from that because there's environmental issues with regard to that. But those were settling tanks to let the solids drop out and fall, and then they scrape the clean water off the top, and then they ozone or chlorinate that, that type of stuff. And I know I'm spending a lot of time here for something that we should probably already voted on, but I think it's also important that we all have a clear understanding of how these systems work. And if you don't know how they work, it doesn't take but a 30 or 45-minute read on how these systems work. End of the day, this system, moving forward with this, I think it was a good exercise we went through for the benefit of our citizens. But it is not one that is going to, we always talk about spending money for the public good that helps a majority and a broad range of our citizens in the town. This isn't one of them, even if the town wasn't paying the $35,000 per house. But we're saddling, like I said earlier, we're saddling each one of those homeowners with, or each one of those properties with that burden, as well as the town is having to pay for that, what, $147,000, if I remember correctly. I just don't think that, I mean, what the homeowners are going to have to come up with is more than what the town puts into. It just doesn't make economic sense. And an aerobic system, doing what it's supposed to do, yes, there are treatments that you're supposed to do to it. Yes, there is a yearly expense to it, but it's far less what your sewage charge is going to be for the water that you're paying for that goes on the yard, to sprinkle the yard, if you've got an irrigation system, versus having to pay the sewage charge against that water that never even sees the sewer. I mean, it, this is not a, it's a fairly simple solution, once we got the economics rolled out of it. But the firsthand experience, I think, is important to know that for them to upgrade their system is going to be, upgrade to the new design systems are not going to be a, it's going to be a third, roughly a third of the significant, of the cost associated. And even on the recurrent basis, it's not going to be near the cost of what the sewage charge would be against sewer fresh waters.
Okay, contract additional discussions on this topic. Okay, we've got another call from, Charles, you wanted the motion on this one, right?
Yes, please.
Can I have a motion on item number eight, please?
I make a motion to deny, should it be to deny or just turn down?
To deny is fine.
To deny the contracting change order, number one, to the contract for burning construction services as described in item eight of our agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. Motion made by Mr. Egan to deny item number eight. Do you have a second?
I'll second, but I do have a question regarding.
Make a motion.
Second, be done.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Egan, second by Mr. Finch. Everyone heard the motion. Are there additional discussions, Mr. Finch?
So, this motion is to deny the current contract to proceed with the roughly half a million dollar.
I think that to deny the action to initiate the charge order, number one, that's right.
Right. The charge roughly is estimated at half a million dollars to put the line underneath and go down the road.
Okay. Any other discussions? Okay, motion made by Egan, second by Mr. Finch to deny item number eight. Item number eight. All in favor, signify. All opposed? Motion passed for two in support of denying, kind of negative, I guess, Mr. Egan, Mr. Freeman, Mr. Allen, Mr. Finch, opposed to Mr. Clark and Mr. George, and Mr. Eldred just absent. Moving on, item number eight, this, I'm sorry, nine, discuss constitutional action on interim use permit with the Pecan Ridge Holdings LLC for the property located at 536 Long Creek.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. 536 Long Creek Road is located at the southeast corner of Long Creek Road and US Highway 80. It's about 26 acres, that portion of which is zoned highway commercial, about the front half of the property. And then the back half of the property switches in a zone to single-family four. There are several small buildings on the property with an old house up on the hill that date back to as early as 1955. And there's always been a variety of uses on the property. The house was used as a residence for a while, and then there's been some small businesses in the various buildings on the property that frankly, the town has struggled over the years to keep track of who all has gone in and out of there from a business perspective on the property. And this recently came up because the property was sold. And as part of that change of ownership, that requires the town to go out and inspect all of the commercial buildings on the property. And what we found was, while the owner intended to purchase the property and continue to occupy the existing buildings with similar uses to what's been there in the past, one use in particular, which the UDO defines as a contractor shop, which is a kind of a small office warehouse space for kind of your contractor-style businesses, where it might be a plumber that has their office and a warehouse for their different pipes and fixtures and things like that. Are there, there's a lot of those uses on the property, even though those not allowed under the highway commercial zoning designation. And so, as we peeled back the onion of this property, we realized that there are a bunch of uses that weren't allowed. Several uses didn't have certificates of occupancy. And so, the owner purchased this thinking that everything was on the up and up, they were good, they can continue using the property in similar fashion to how it's been used in the past. And so, long-term, or longer term, they are intending to request rezoning for the property, to rezone it to a planned development, which has all of the highway commercial standards, but that also allows contractor shops in these buildings. But in the interim, the property owner would like the town to allow temporary certificates of occupancy to be issued to both the current tenants that are in there that don't have COs, that don't follow the zoning regulations, as well as they have a few prospective tenants that they have been talking to before they realize that this was an issue. That gives them some capital to kind of get them through the zoning process, make the plan, start making improvements to the property that the town wants to see. And so, the mechanism for doing so, allowing staff to issue temporary certificates of occupancy, is to approve an interim use agreement, a draft of which we have attached to the agenda for your review. Just because of the, we kind of rushed to get this on the agenda to be accommodating to the property owner. And so, we haven't fully vetted it with them. But it would, it would give them, in this draft, about 120 days where we would issue these temporary COs and allow them time to go through the zoning process. If the zoning is approved, then the uses would be allowed. And it would give them, under the current draft, a year to then bring the property up to other development standards related to landscaping and paving, parking, and things like that. If the use is denied, then it gives them a period of time to wind down the businesses on the property and get them out and replace them with uses that are allowed. So, you know, at the end of the day, it gets us wherever the town wants to be, regardless of what the outcome of the zoning decision is. It just gives them a little bit of help to get through the interim period. And so, another component of the agreement is all parties, including the users, the tenants, that are these contractor shops, would have to agree to the terms of the agreement before we would issue the temporary CEO. So, everyone that is in there that gets a temporary CEO or is going in there with a temporary CEO would know that there's a possibility that within a certain period of time, they maybe have to relocate to another property. And so, if this is a concept that the council is supportive of, then we'd recommend that you approve the item and ask that you make the agreement subject to final review and approval by the town manager and town attorney, just to allow staff to work out the final details. If it gets to, you know, they need 180 days instead of 120 days, or, you know, something like that, some minor details of the agreement to make it feasible, that would allow staff to do so.
So, just to make sure it understands, it's for 120 days, so there's a clock ticking. And at the end of the 120 days, they need to come back to council and finding the zoning, I'm assuming.
Right.
Plus for additional.
Within that 120-day period, or whatever ends up being in the final agreement, within that period, they would have to put all the plans together and get through both P and Z and council.
Did they agree with that?
We talked about it in our initial meeting with them, but I haven't, I don't know if they've slept on it and got with their consultant.
I just don't know if that's time long enough or not.
It's aggressive, it may need to be a little bit longer than that, but that's where we put it to start the process.
And if not, once you pass, one can become back to game for the extension if they need to?
Correct, yeah, that's always an option.
Mr. Freeman?
My only concern here is you said parking spots and all that. And I think we all know that, you know, concrete is super expensive. Preliminary discussions we've had is that they understand that, hey, there will have to be parking, there will have to be this, there will have to be this. And we've gotten past that point where they say, okay, they don't have a problem putting that capital out. Because I'd hate to even go through this exercise if we go through and say, well, you're going to have to put parking. And they're like, why can't you park it? Because, you know, now it's too expensive. They've already said that they're willing to do, like, whatever's required. And they understand that it's parking and it's expensive and all that. So, we're not just doing this just for the purpose of saying yes to something. They understand that there will be a capital expenditure on their part.
Correct.
Okay. May I open up for public comments? May I open up for public comments? If anyone from the members of the audience would like to speak to the council, item number nine, you may do so. You may come forward. If you're joining us via Zoom, you may raise your hand. No one is coming forward from the chamber. Eric, can anyone raise their hand?
No, sir.
No hands raised, we're going to close the public comments, council discussions. So, if you have a comment, sir? Any other council staff and discussions on this one? Okay, if not, can I have a motion to, with respect to item number nine?
Make a motion to approve item nine, as presented.
Is that good enough, Charles?
Subject to final review and approval by the town manager and town attorney.
Absolutely.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Finch to approve item number nine, subject to final approval by town manager and town attorney.
Second.
Second by Mr. Clark. Everyone heard the motion. All in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed six oh. Mr. Eldred just absent. Moving on, right, number 10, mayor and council request for future staff updates on items. Any items? Okay. If not, I'm going to close that item. You want a comment, sir?
Yes, the last council meeting, we asked for an update on the road. I think we got an email, so I don't know if there's an update, but I mean, I've heard.
Do you want an agenda item, or do you want a request?
We asked for this last week, so I didn't know.
I actually made the request, and I said not this meeting because we had so much going on. But I gave them two meetings, so that's.
We'll have an update at the next meeting, next meeting.
It's coming, agenda item, let's just add the next one, right? Okay, anything else? Okay, if none, can I have a motion to adjourn into, as item number 11? Can I motion adjourn to executive session pursuant to section 551.087, economic development projects required?
Make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to section 551.087.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Freeman, second by Mr. Clark. Everyone heard the motion and discussions. All in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed six oh. The time is 7:47, and we are in executive session. You good? Okay, now time is eight oh one. We are back in open session, I can confirm as a result of the executive session. No action is to be taken. With that said, can I, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Freeman, second by Clark to adjourn, all in favor, signify. All opposed?